My college meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners is in session at this time, and Commissioner Berkey Jennings will lead the invocation, Commissioner Judy Moose will give the pledge of allegiance. If you all would please rise.
If you bow your heads please. Dear Father, we thank you for everyone gathered here now. Thank you that you know each of us by name and have caused us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust is in you completely. As we surrender ourselves in adoration, we ask that you would come by your Holy Spirit, inspire our hearts today. Come fill our lives with your love, fill our conversations with your grace and truth, fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this for your glory and praise. Amen.
I pledge a salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Does anyone have anything for the Commissioners' report? I have one thing that should be of very much interest to the citizens of Alexander County, along with our industry in Alexander County, and with CBCC. I'm going to take the opportunity this time to read this news release, and it's with, I'm just absolutely thrilled that we're being able to do this. The Alexander County awarded $1.5 million grant from the Economic Development Administration. Alexander County received notification on April 28th that the county's application for a $1.5 million grant from the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration has received preliminary approval. The purpose of the grant is to assist in funding a workforce training program in conjunction with Catawba Valley Community College. The county is the primary applicant for the grant funds which will be applied to a construction and renovation project to be located in the former apparel technologies building located across from the CBCC's Alexander Center for Education in Tyler'sville. County Commissioners have previously approved the purchase of the 37,500 square feet facility and have been collaborating with CBCC and local industry to develop and fund this new workforce training center. This facility will initially focus on training for upholstery, sewing, welding, and metallurgy. Early plans indicate 7,200 square feet for the upholstery training area, 3,900 square feet for the sewing training, 4,000 square feet for the welding lab, and 1,600 square feet for the metallurgy lab. The facility provides ample square feet for additional training labs in the future or expansion of additional training. The estimated cost for the project is $2,613,596. In addition to the $1.5 million from the EDA, revenues for the project include $400,000 from Alexander County and $423,600 through a CBCC Golden Leaf Foundation grant. Additional funds have been pledged from the Duke Energy Foundation and from the CBCC College Foundation. Local industries have agreed to participate financially include HSM Solutions, Mitchell Gold and Bob Williams, Snyder Mills, Craftmaster, Hancock &amp; Moore, Paladin Industries, Taylor Keane, Premium Cushion, Leggett &amp; Platt, and Hand Industries. And the project is one of the best examples I've ever seen of multiple organizations working together for the betterment of Alexander County. The financial commitment made by EDA, CBC, Duke Energy Foundation, Golden Leaf Foundation, local industry, and county citizens will benefit many generations in this county. This project sets the standard for this board's commitment to improving the quality of life for citizens by providing additional employment, training, and job opportunities. With this project, we are taking our commitment to a local industry to a new level by providing them trained employment candidates, and we will now have a state-of-the-art training facility and can meet the needs of new businesses considering locating in our county. So that is what's going on. I wanted everybody to be aware of that, and I'm going to finish with what Dr. Garrett Henshaw said. Dr. Henshaw, President of CBC noted that the facility will have great benefits for Alexander County, but also noted a wider scope. I applaud all the partners in this project for their ability to vision the future, Dr. Henshaw noted. This facility is going to be a game changer in Alexander County. Citizens here will have a facility where they can receive training for highly skilled employment, plus this facility will have a regional draw pulling in potential workers from other counties. The value that this facility will have for economic development efforts to assist existing industry and to recruit new industry in Alexander County will be tremendous. The county will have a facility that will meet the training needs for legacy industries, plus the facility will have the capacity and flexibility to provide skilled workers to meet demands from future employers. The EDA grant is being administered by the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and the work process is expected to take several months to finalize. Design and engineering may be completed at the end of 2014 with construction following in 2015. I think this speaks well. These are some of the things that we have been working on as a board in conjunction with CBCC and our industry. These are some of the things also that our local industry had asked for. They had wanted to see something happen here so that they were able to train their employees and then be ready to come into the workforce and be ready to put their skills to work. And I am extremely ecstatic that this has happened. It's good for this county, it's good for CBCC, and it's absolutely fantastic to be able to maintain this in our county so that our employers can maintain a great quality of workmanship in their facilities. So that is what has happened in the last couple of days, and we're glad that happened. And the news media will have a copy of this for you all, so you all will have it and be able to make those announcements. Is there anything else from any other Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly want to say that the Supreme Court made a decision today that deals with prayer before town meetings. The Town of Greece versus Galloway decision was today. Don't know exactly how it's going to impact everyone, but it might change how we give our prayer before the government sessions.
One additional comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, about that Supreme Court decision. It was a decision made in the state of New York dealing with county board meetings. It was a very narrow decision. So as Commissioner Ferguson alluded to, we do not know yet, nor do the attorneys all over the country know for counties and states how that will affect how we say prayers in the county. So it may not change in the near future, but hopefully we will be able to, but it was, like I said, it was a very narrow decision. There's other cases pending before the Supreme Court that could affect specifically how prayers are said in counties and would make a more definitive ruling, but that was only one that affected a board in New York State decision that was rendered.
Anyone else?
Well, I would like to report that Alexander County youth went to Concord over the weekend, and I was with them for 12 hours running. Both teams came home with the bacon at 10:00 at night. It was excruciating, but I was so proud to be an Alexander County grandmother there. Anyway, I would just like to say that the people that coached these teams spend their time, their 12 hours on their Saturday off, and there's no money in it. They pay all the cost. And they are out there as mentors and teaching our young people. They're doing what parents really should do. And I applaud them because we have good parents in this county, and I'd just like to say that they all did a great job down in Cabarrus County this weekend.
Very good. One thing, Mr. Chairman. This past weekend, the Hickory-Catawba Valley Home Builders Association held their annual parade of homes, and I'm the past president, and another Alexander County resident is this year's president, Don Harrington. Don was unable to be here tonight, but just wanted to say that we had a great parade. There seems to be a big pickup in home building, residential home building, so it was a really good parade. And all of our members here from Alexander County, as well as Catawba County, are looking forward to a good year in the residential home building business. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. You folks have the agenda there before you. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda as is.
Same move.
Motion's made. Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The first item on the agenda tonight is public comment, and of course, in a public comment, we allow each person about three minutes to speak, and at this time, we only have one person signed up, and that's Russell Green, who's going to tell about the exercise update in Alexander County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity. The date for this exercise has kind of been a moving target with CBCC, but to let you, our county manager and our staff know, and mostly our citizens, on Thursday, May 8th, this Thursday morning beginning at 8:00 roughly, we'll have an emergency services exercise in conjunction with CBCC Alexander Campus here. Up front, we want to apologize for any inconvenience to our citizens. We will probably be blocking off a street here or there, and we'll be working with the staff of CBCC. This was a joint effort with Catawba County and Alexander County. The grant was awarded to Catawba County because it's a multi-campus, the CBCC campus in Catawba County, the CBCC campus here. So there's just an opportune time tonight, you having a meeting to get this out there to our citizens. We'll be involving our Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue EMS, Tattersall Police Department because we are in town. We'll have a number of evaluators on site, but it'll give us an opportunity to test our ability to respond to potentially inactive shooter, some other kind of incident. We've got what I think's a pretty good scenario. Catawba County hired a group of individuals to facilitate this. I think the two gentlemen are doing a great job thus far, and I'll be happy to come back and report on that after this Thursday, but right now, we're just trying to get all our pieces pulled together and pull this thing off. Hopefully, no later than about 12 noon on Thursday, we'll be finished. We'll start about 8:00 and we'll finish about 12:00. The table tops have been happening in Catawba County. Some of the staff here at CBCC have been attending those meetings, along with myself, representatives from our Sheriff's Office and our Police Department. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can. I'd like to thank Commissioner Ferguson's willing to donate his time to serve as one of our evaluators, and we appreciate that. We've got some staff from our school system that's going to help us evaluate, as well as some state emergency management folks that'll be here to evaluate for. So I think we've put together a good scenario. I think we've got a good exercise before us, but up front, we certainly appreciate all the support from our citizens. We apologize up front for any inconvenience for that four-hour period on Thursday morning. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, it's a public hearing economic development incentive grant at this time. I'd call him David Eisenhower, the EDC Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is a public hearing for the board to consider an application by Brushy Mountain Golf Course for a tourism incentive grant. This notice of public hearing was published on Wednesday, April 23rd, in the Tattersall Times as required by law. The basis for this grant includes the addition of new clubhouse, overnight lodge, and equipment at Brushy Mountain Golf Course, resulting in the creation of approximately 15 new jobs and tax valuation increase of roughly $1.4 million. This proposed grant has been consented and received preliminary approval by the Alexander County EDC Board of Directors. This proposed grant, if approved, would consist of a grant equal to 100% of property taxes paid by the company for the first 10 years after completion. The net amount to the company is 95%, with 5% retained by EDC for administration as stated in your tourism policy. The estimated actual cost to the county is approximately $86,000 over the 10-year period. The actual estimated grant to Brushy Mountain Golf would be approximately $82,000, with EDC retaining approximately $4,000 over the 10-year period. These amounts are estimated amounts. If the valuation of the property comes out to be less than what these numbers are based on, or if and when your tax rate changes, it changes the actual dollar amount of the grant, but whatever you prove tonight as far as percentage and term of the grant would not change. Mr. Chairman, with that, I will conclude my comments related directly to the public hearing portion of this, but before you open the floor for public comments, we are privileged to have with us tonight Mr. Joe Ferguson, who is golf pro and owner of the project, Mr. Baxter Hayes, and I'm going to ask Baxter to come up and just give you a real quick summary of the project and his plans at the golf course.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate it. We're about a month away. The clubhouse is going to be about 6,000 square feet. We'll have a 3,300 square foot multipurpose room. It's, we're going to call it the Alexander Room. We've spent about $400,000 so far on equipment. We're waiting for the zoning to start the lodges. We'll start with 10 lodges. They'll be open to the public. Everything's open to the public, but stay a semi-private club.
Baxter, just clarify for everybody, when you say lodges, you're really talking about a, I'll use a word, but you tell me what your word would be beyond that. It's really a motel room, is it not?
Yeah, but it just sounds better. Slippery Mountain Lodges versus Brushy Mountain Hotel Rooms.
I know, I know.
But it's got a lodge look, cedar siding. We're real proud of it, but the plans are ready. Soon as we get the zoning, we'll start it. And we're going to start with 10, which is like, like you said, hotel rooms, five and five, double beds. We'll be able to seat 20, or sleep 20 folks in there. The restaurant will be open three meals a day, seven days a week. We're committed for six months on that. We don't know how, we don't know what the market's going to be on that. We've got plans to, if we can get the occupancy for the hotel rooms, then we'll continue at a clip at 10 a pop. We've got room for 50 units right there. So we're hoping that we can fill them all up. We can build these in about 60 days, once we get the okay. First one's a little bit bigger, but after that. Electric golf carts, we've never had those before. We bought 60 of those from Easy Go. Those were around $300,000. We've had a lot of help out of, not exactly part of the grant or request, but Rick and Darrell's helped us a lot so far trying to work with us on our erosion problem. And we spent about roughly $40,000 just on the erosion issue with the pond, and about another 20 on the bridge that's down there. But, you know, we're very blessed. We've got a great golf course, and we're able to keep our prices very reasonable. Family membership for 85 bucks a month, you can hardly beat that. In fact, no one can touch that. Our membership from when we closed the 5th of October has gone from 244 to 362. So we're getting all kinds of support. A third of the members are from out of the county. We get about 40% of our revenue out of the county, and about 50% of our tournaments that we host for charity are from out of the county. So that's kind of nice to keep some of that money from crossing the river.
Talk about, for a minute, about what you anticipate the usage of the multipurpose room, what it can be used for, and what you hope it will use for.
We've heard that term "state-of-the-art." Everybody says "state-of-the-art," but we've got it set up with full comfort facilities. We can play meals, probably at 250 people. It's 3,300 square feet. It's all open. We're going to push from class reunions to wedding receptions to conferences, businesses. We just had to, before we put a big marketing push on it, we wanted to get closer to our completion date, and it looks real good now for the end of May. Our first big event's the member guest. That's the next weekend in June. Of course, myself and most of our team are not used to the restaurant business or the lodging business or stuff like that, so we're learning as we go along. Well, appreciate it. Any other questions?
Are you going to have the best-case scenario, are you going to have the lodging, the initial units open by the end of May with the occupancy approval?
No, we were hoping, we hoped to start it by middle May, but we've got a zoning issue there we're trying to work through. Now, our 50-year anniversary is the 1st of September. We were hoping to get that done before then. We've got a good chance to get Carolina Camera to come up for that. It'd be kind of nice to have the lodging done, but if it doesn't, we'll do the best we can.
$85 per month, how many times can you play golf?
Let's see, 31 days if it's, a month's about 31 days.
You can't beat that.
Anytime.
And family membership is like husband and wife?
Well, we're not too strict about that. We'll let our kids play with them. And, you know, probably college-age, we're kind of, some of these things, we're kind of working out as we go.
Well, most of us don't want children.
But, no, we want children. We've done a lot, and the school system's really helped us out recently. Joe started all kinds of different programs. We're going to move the PE's going to become one of the, or golf's going to become one of the PE deals. We're starting, I guess tomorrow, 120 kids from the school system out there, get them to start on golf.
And the other thing that you're doing, I don't mean to interrupt you, and I apologize for that, but the other thing that Brushy Mountain Golf Course has done for years that maybe the most folks do not know, they have supported Alexander Central High School, allowing them to have their golf tournaments there. And when I say tournaments, it's tournament action in conference play, and they have practiced there for, I know, 40 years. Same to me like, same to me like forever. And they have accommodated the high school, and they have never charged them for anything. It's always been free. They are a contributing factor to the community, and the things that they have done in conjunction with the schools and other people has been just absolutely fantastic over the years. And from what I understand, that's going to continue even now that it's in private ownership.
Sure.
So I want to get that tidbit out there because I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see people that work with the school to try to do things to help improve the lives of children. And I think that's great. I really do.
I would like to say that my husband's already played twice last week, and he thinks it's the greatest thing that's happened since I came along.
Well, I appreciate that.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I just want to thank you for taking a sales there and making a silk purse out of it. I mean, because that, maybe some of the people that are listening and watching that are here maybe not, don't care about the comment I'm about to make, but when that golf course was built, and if you can blame some of the problems on me, that was one of the jobs I had during my college summers was working on the golf course to help build a golf course many years ago. So, but I really appreciate you taking what was there when you bought it and bringing it up to the state it's in now, especially with the new clubhouse and the anticipated lodges. And I just think it's a wonderful thing for, for the first time in a long time, if a businessperson comes to Alexander County to call on Snyder Mills or one of the other manufacturing companies or any business in the county, they will have a place to stay and a place to eat, and that sales tax revenue stays in Alexander County. So I really appreciate that.
Well, you're welcome. But we had a great golf course before I bought it. We've touched it up a little bit, but the clubhouse and the lodging, that will help.
Well, it's a beautiful view. I mean, if you ride around the course, and like I said, I'm not going to take any credit for the scenic beauty of the golf course, but I did help in the construction using a bush axe and things like that.
We still got some of that left to do if you want to come on.
I retire from that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Baxter.
Thanks so much.
Now, is this as a public hearing, does any other Commissioner have anything or have any questions they'd like to ask the folks that are involved in the grant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask David Eisenhower just a couple of questions.
Good. David?
So basically, what we're doing is giving them a, or, we're not going to be charging them any new taxes on any increase in valuation, correct?
The net effect of that is yes.
Yes.
Is yes, for the new construction.
Right.
Not the existing.
Not the existing.
Golf course.
Right.
Yes.
So, I mean, basically, we're not charging them for taxes that if the course had not been touched, we wouldn't have got it anyway. So the county wouldn't have gotten this increase in tax revenue anyway.
Right. And to say we're not charging them is not exactly correct. We are charging them. The policy, as you know.
Right.
Requires them to pay in full, so I don't want to get, I don't want to get that confused. But they pay their taxes in full, and then you can legally refund whatever portion of that that you decide tonight.
But the net effect is the same?
Yes, yes.
And I know the answer to this question, but if you would, please answer it for the public. Why does the EDC retain 5%?
Well, the ED, because there are several reasons. Number one, years ago when the policy was first created, the EDC did not get any funds from this policy, and several years ago, the board determined that it was a good way to assist with economic development efforts in the county to, for the EDC to retain a small, very small portion of grant money that's awarded by the county. And it also helps to pay for the, just the general administration for it. It's not as simple as just saying tonight, you've awarded a grant and that's the end of it. There is a joint agreement that has to be signed between the county and the golf course, and so the EDC facilitates that, makes sure all that paperwork's together. Every year when a grant is paid, there's a process of paperwork to go through. With every company that gets awarded a grant, we verify, in this case, since it's a tourism grant, the jobs don't require verification like other grants do, but we will verify the value each year, and we'll go through a process with Brushy Mountain every year to determine what their payment is, because like I say, the actual dollar amount can vary from year to year depending on two things, what the tax rate is that particular year and what the valuation of the property is. Primarily, it's the tax rate change that affects the annual grant amount. Did that answer, did that answer your question, Mr.?
Does anyone else have any questions? As this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience that would have any questions or any comments, you're free to do so at this time. There being none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
And I second it.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion from the board as to your pleasure as to this economic development incentive grant.
I make a motion, we approve the economic incentive grant for the golf course.
I second it.
The motion is made in second. Is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Very good. Congratulations, gentlemen. And I think this is a great incentive program for Brushy Mountain Golf Course, and I think it's going to be a good thing for Alexander County, and I truly look forward to it opening up. I think it's going to be a tremendous asset to the citizens, more so than what they realize. And for that, thank you very much.
Thanks for the jobs, too.
Especially the jobs. Thank you. Item number three, Alexander County Treasurer's Award. Mr. James Burke, CPA, CMA, and Assistant Director-in-State and Local Government Finance Division.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, and fine citizens of Alexander County. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening and be a part of this presentation and be a part of your board meeting. My name is Jim Burke, and I'm representing Department of State Treasurer. But first of all, I kind of want to give credit to the North Carolina Association of Certified Public Accountants. We generally like to have a representative from there to share in presenting this award. However, there was a last-minute emergency where my colleague could not attend, but I just want to point out that they are partners with us in this. This is the 23rd year that we have been doing the Department of State Treasurer's Award for Excellent Accounting and Financial Management, and been recognizing achievements of local governments and public authorities across the North Carolina. Each year, Department of State Treasurer distributes application packets encouraging local governments and public authorities to submit entries to the award program. of local governments and public authorities all across the North Carolina. Each year, Department of State Treasurer distributes application packets encouraging local governments and public authorities to submit entries to the award program. Now, completed entries go directly to the NCA CPA, where they're awaited by members of a subcommittee, the Governmental Accounting and Auditing Committee, in January of each year, and entries include a description of improvements made to the local governments, the accounting and financial management program systems, methods and procedures during the previous year, and hopefully the entries represent service improvements and/or cost savings to local governments submitting these entries. So, it's a, it's a privilege to share this along with the North Carolina Association of CPAs. The program is extremely competitive and making decisions to which entries or winners are very tough, and each and every year, personally, I'm not involved with the selection, but I do hear it's kinda competitive and kinda tough to make some of these selections. And winners are recognized on a statewide basis and also local board meeting, local board meetings such as this one. So, it is a great pleasure that we recognize Alexander County, it was chosen to receive this award in the category of population of fifteen, fifty thousand and less. Now, the State Treasurer Award for Excellent Accounting and Financial Management, as I said, have been in existence for twenty-three years, the State Treasurer Janet Cowe is deeply committed to North Carolina local governments and their efforts to make improvements to their accounting system and financial management practices. Now, establishing this award, the treasurer saw two objectives as essential components. First, the individual recognition of award winners at board meetings such as this one, so local governments working to improve their financial management practices could receive recognition for their hard work. The other component is that information about successful efforts of winners of these award programs is communicated to local governments across the state so that inquiries can be made regarding their winning entries. As a result, many local governments can benefit of learning about the efforts of units such as Alexander County. Now, this mutual sharing enables local governments to leverage their efforts for the benefit of all North Carolina citizens. Alexander County was selected to receive this treasure award based on submission of the application implementing an electronic document storage and retrieval system for its accounts payable functions using the Tyler Content Manager in conjunction with the current accounting system of Munis. Alexander County is fortunate to have folks like Jennifer Herman and her staff, as well as you, the board, need to be commended as well for a job well done. So, it's a great pleasure for me to present this 2014 treasure award to Governmental Accounting and Financial Management Ward to Jennifer Herman in Alexander County.
That's the CPA right there.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a minute to thank my staff, I especially would like to thank my Deputy Finance Director Linda Williams, she could not be here tonight, but she was the project leader for this, and I'm very proud of everything the staff did to go through the training and the implementation, it was a good six-month process, I'd also like to thank our Information Technology Director Greg Kronk, he helped with the computer hardware and software configuration, and this has just been a real improvement in our ability to access our documentation for our accounts payable function, we don't have to go down the hall or down the road to retrieve copies of paid bills, we can let other departments who have the appropriate access in our financial accounting system, you know, they can retrieve it on their own, more than one person can look up a paid bill at one time instead of having to figure out, well, this file cabinet says that particular document is checked out and who has it, so it's really been able to, you know, speed up the process of which we can, to find these documents we need, we can spend our time on more important matters instead of hunting down pieces of paper, so we've really been pleased with the implementation of this, and this is the first year we've applied for this award, so I'm very pleased and was surprised to find out that we had received the award, and again, I'd really like to thank my staff and the IT department for their help with this.
Thank you. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
We'd like to have you, do a good job.
Yes, every time I call Rick, they, the people that answer the telephone said, he's downstairs, so I know when he's downstairs, he's probably down in your office, but, yes, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much for being here.
Item number four on the agenda tonight, Older Americans Month 2014 Proclamation and Powerpoint Presentation, Jill Woody, Senior Center Director.
Good evening, Commissioners, I just wanted to spend a few minutes tonight and let you know that May is considered Older Americans Month. This year, the theme for the month is Safe Today, Healthy Tomorrow, and we at the Senior Center try our very best to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our seniors each year, so I brought you a proclamation, I was hoping Chairman Yoder, you would read that.
If you'd like for me to, I'd be glad to.
Please.
One minute, I'll do this, if I don't, I'll miss it. Older Americans Month 2014, a proclamation, whereas Alexander County includes over sixty-five hundred citizens aged sixty-five and older, and whereas Alexander County is committed to helping all individuals live longer and healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in Alexander County have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas we recognize the value of injury provision, prevention, and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of senior, senior individuals by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire burns, helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now, therefore, we, the county, the county board of commissioners of Alexander County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be the Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community, this the fifth day of May 2014. And Jim, at this time, I'd make that in the form of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Older Americans Month 2014 proclamation.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand, the motion carries, and carry on, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am.
I wanted to share with you just a little bit of some of the things that work at the Senior Center, a little bit of information, the latest census information we are able to obtain is 2012, and at that time, Alexander County's total population was almost thirty-seven thousand. Of that population, sixty-plus was almost nine thousand, so we had twenty-four percent of, over the age of sixty being our population, and of those over sixty-five, fourteen-point-six percent were living below the poverty level. In 2012, the Alexander Senior Center had an unduplicated membership of just a little over a thousand, and they generated thirteen thousand visits to the center. Last year, 2013, the Senior Center had an unduplicated membership of fifteen hundred, and they generated seventeen thousand visits to the center. So, as you can see, we are growing exponentially. And last year in April, we were able to open the Bethlehem site that is located at Mount Pisgah Lutheran Church, it's open two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Then in July, we opened a second satellite site in Stony Point, at the Stony Point United Methodist Church, it also is open two days a week, Mondays and Wednesdays. Some of the things that we do at the center, last year for the annual open enrollment from October fifteenth to December the seventh, we assisted four hundred and ten people in determining the best drug plan for the upcoming year. By doing so, we saved them four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, almost a half a million dollars that stayed in this county. We also assisted forty-five people new to Medicare to understand how Medicare works and what they need to do as they turn sixty-five. This is an ongoing project, and we still average approximately one to three people every week that are turning sixty-five. We helped eighty-three people that had problems with their drug plans to either reduce their premiums or their co-pays. We helped to apply for three hundred and sixty-seven applications for assistance to pay for their drug plans and medications, and we assisted seventeen people who were not on Medicare yet to apply for pharmaceutical aid.
Jill, if I may interrupt just a moment, where do the individuals that provide this help to the seniors that come in and ask for help, enrolling in Medicare or the different aspects of pharmaceuticals and so forth, where do they get their training?
We are trained by the state, it's through the SHIP, the State Health Information, Information Insurance Program.
Is that a one-time event per year because of all, all the changes going on with Affordable Care Act and so forth, is that held more than, on an annual basis?
The training, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, the training is ongoing, I am the coordinator for SHIP for this county, and we have approximately ten volunteers who also work with me, and we have ongoing training once a month, we have a conference call with the state where we receive any training, and we constantly receive emails and things through the mail that we have to study and brush up on and any changes. Just this morning, I received notice from Medicare on some different changes that were coming up, so it is ongoing. The biggest program that we work with is the Extra Help Program, and that is also, that's a state program, and it allows people who are on Medicare, because once you get on Medicare, you do not be on the Affordable Care Act, and if they have an income of less than fourteen hundred and fifty-nine dollar a month for a single person, or less than nineteen hundred and sixty-six dollars for a couple, then we can file an application for this extra help. That program pays a portion of the drug plan premiums and reduces their co-pays on the drugs. It also reduces or completely eliminates any deductibles and that dreaded doughnut hole that so many people fall into. Now, we partner with a lot of other groups there at the center, well, last year, we worked with the Alexander School System and developed the Alexander County Senior Sixty-Plus Card, and it allows people, seniors, into our county sporting events free of charge. Best Value Hearing works out of our center every week, and they perform free hearing tests and free hearing aid cleanings. The North Carolina Division of Services for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing comes to the center each month, and they assist in providing one free hearing aid per person if necessary. The COG provides free fans to the center in the summer to distribute to our seniors who do not have air conditioning. Legal aid comes each year to draw up free simple wills, powers of attorney, healthcare powers of attorney, and healthcare living wills. AARP was there providing free tax assistance, they come every year from February until April. We had an NC Navigator who came once a week to provide information and assistance with the Affordable Care Act for those who didn't understand it. We are working with Catawba, Fry, and Wilkes Hospitals to partner in providing free tests and screenings for our seniors throughout the year. ARP provides a safe driver's course for seniors in the fall of each year at the center. The Alexander Health Department provides flu shots, and the Alexander Home Health provides monthly blood pressure checks. The VA provides a screening and flu shot clinic for all veterans. Carolina Cross Connection helps with odd jobs for seniors around their homes such as cleaning out the gutters or yard work. The Alzheimer's Association assists with free memory screenings each fall. The Baptist Aging Ministry provides free top-of-the-line fire alarms, and Russell Green, our Emergency Services Director, and the local fire departments have agreed that they will go out and install these fire alarms for us. The center's computer lab is open every day, so those who do not have internet can come by and check email or surf the web, and if they don't understand the computers, we usually have someone there that can assist them. A membership at ancestry.com allows the center participants the opportunity to research their genealogy and discover long, long family members. Uniform Senior Games sends ambassadors to train and practice with our members each year's games. An official Senior Games Fun Walk will be held in conjunction with the Spring Senior Celebration here in Alexander County at the Senior Center for the second year in a row, that will be Friday, May the sixteenth from nine to one. For physical fitness, we offer senior exercises, sweating to the oldies, yoga, tai chi, line dancing, and the Veterans Administration Move Program for veterans and their families. And everything that I've just told you is in addition to our regular schedule of music, nutrition classes, painting, wood carving, gardening, needlework, crafts, bingo, movies, trips, golf, computer classes, and just plain socialization. And so I brought you some, some pictures, just so you could see some of the fun times at the Senior Center. We stay busy, we had musicians jam as we do every morning. This morning, we had seventy-four people in attendance. The exercise group, you can see some of the line dancing and square dancing, and just some of the exercise going on. Then we have our hearing test, this lady comes out of Statesville every Wednesday and is available free of charge to do a complete audio hearing test. Our wood carvers group just won a bunch of medals at the Senior Games, so we're real proud of those. Our art class also won several medals, and as you can see, they're hard at work. Anybody who's gonna be around after Thursday, they're all hanging up all their projects so everyone can see. The flu shots, we give several times during the year, of course, we have our health there in the fall, but even before then and after then, we do have different flu shot clinics. Our needlework group has provided teddy bears and blankets to the sheriff's department for children when they have to be picked up. And then for socialization, our Wii bowling and games group meets twice a month, twice a week, I'm sorry. And there's some of our winners from past Senior Games. And our coupon club, so that we can all save money, they really enjoy that. And finally, I'd like to say that the Alexander County seniors, thank each and every one of you for your support, they invite any seniors to come out Tuesday, May the thirteenth over at the high school, we will be having our senior prom, not for graduating seniors, but for seniors who have already graduated there, and then on the sixteenth, we'll be having our senior celebration, and everyone is invited.
And you're having the senior prom at the high school?
Yes.
All right.
We'll have a jazz band, two jazz bands.
Really? It was fun the last time.
Yeah, you enjoyed it.
Absolutely. One, one question I'd like to ask you, ask, ask is the, since you've opened up the Stony Point and Bethlehem facilities, how has your membership increased and how has it progressed over the time since it's opened?
Stony Point is very slow, I'll be very honest with you, Stony Point is very slow, it has a minimal amount of attendance, but we are building and we keep trying new things down there, and hopefully, well, that'll grow. Bethlehem is doing very well, we're real pleased with the attendance that we have in the Bethlehem Center, last month, their attendance was about a hundred and eighty-three.
And it's been in operation how long now?
For a year now.
For a year, and Stony Point's been?
About nine months.
Very good, so you're steadily seeing that growth then, that's, that's good, especially in Bethlehem.
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good, very good report.
Thank you.
Very good report. Thank you, any commissioners have anything? Very good report. Thank you. Any commissioners have anything? And I'd also say that the line dancing, I've had to learn a few of those dances because they were brought home for me to learn. So I've learned a few of them.
I was pointing out while you were giving your presentation, there was a picture of Hazel on one of the slides. I said, Larry, you know, I didn't say it, but I had a look at that. But I would like to offer this comment, and it's meant for Ms. Woody and the staff of the Senior Center and for really the commissioners too. Every time I've been out there for meetings or just been out there, period, to visit, it's a very refreshing atmosphere with all the activities going on, been to the, you know, the Christmas activities and so forth. And so I just appreciate what Jill, what you and the staff do. And I'm glad to see the usage is growing. Of course, I'm now in the category of a senior too, way past that category. Time passes so fast. But anyhow, y'all do a tremendous job, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Any other commissioner? Very good. Item number five, resolution tied Alexander County Commissioner compensation to county valuation. Commissioner Ferguson?
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, Mr. French and the public, this is a resolution that's been drafted to tie the commissioner pay rate compensation to the county valuation as calculated every year by the tax office. Under Article fourteen, Chapter one fifty-three, twenty-eight of the North Carolina General Statutes, the Board of Commissioners is authorized to fix their compensation allowances. Previously, the compensation schedule has been set by comparison to surrounding counties without benefit of specific methodology. The work of the commissioners should be compensated, but at a rate that's consummate with the revenue generated by the county's overall net worth as evaluated by the property tax evaluation. The rate that has been proposed by this resolution is three hundred, thirty-two-point-five-hundred-millions of the county valuation. As that equates in the mathematics, it would result in a drop in compensation as from last year's budget. Adjustments to this rate can only be done after the county has received and updated an official county revaluation, preferably every eight years, as dictated by the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one zero five dash two eighty-six. The compensation cap, regardless of the numbers generated by the yearly county property tax evaluation, the amount of compensation authorized under this resolution shall not exceed the county average of the county commissioner pay of the counties adjoining Alexander County, which means that we will take the other counties that surround Alexander County and get an average of those. And this county would not exceed that average of those counties. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion that we accept this resolution for discussion.
You'd like to entertain a motion or you'd like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion.
Okay, very good. Now, the motion's made and is there a second? There is not. Is there a second? No second. I will explain to the commissioners one thing, that when something comes up and the commissioner brings it up, he has the right to make the motion. And when that motion is made, based on the general statutes, he does not have to have a second for that conversation or for that to come up on this board. And when that is brought up, based under the general statutes, then the vote would have to be called for.
Mr. Chairman, I have a procedural question here.
Yes.
Is there a discussion if there is not a second?
There would be discussion because the motion is on the floor, based under what I understand from looking at this. That's my understanding that, and I am not an expert, okay? Let's get that straight right now so everybody understands. But based on what I read and what I had, the clerk to the board found out, based on some things that had, you know, we'd gone back and done some research, and this was brought up a couple of weeks ago. She has this, the general statute number is GS one fifty-three A dash forty-four is the statute. And rule like the city voting schedule, GS one sixty-eight dash seventy-five, the city that requires a favorable vote by a member who is physically present in the council chamber or who has withdrawn without being excused by majority of the voters, the remaining members present, shall be recorded as an affirmative vote. And based on what I have found out and what the Madam Clerk had found out for me was the fact that when something does come up, it is called for vote. When one person makes a motion, does not have a second. And sir, I would say at this time that yes, that that would subject the motion to discussion.
Well, let me make it much easier. I'll just go ahead and second the motion and that way.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded then, okay? I'm just going by what the statutes say because I just want everybody to understand that.
Thank you, Ryan, for seconding, so we can have at least a discussion. This, fellow commissioners, this is not a witch hunt or a political or finger-pointing exercise. We can make as many mistakes as we want to in life, except the one that kills us. And one of the reasons why I was even attracted to the appointment for this position was this issue of compensation. And my naivety, just to tell you where I came from, I assumed that this position was gratis. Just to tell you how naive I was. And talking to some of the citizens in the county, they were unaware that this position was even compensated to begin with. Now, after doing this job for, what, three months, four months now, I see where compensation is certainly warranted. I do. My issue, and the issue that I brought up in response to develop this resolution, is the comparison of our compensation schedule with the surrounding counties. We, you have in front of you an Excel spreadsheet comparing the counties that join us as well as counties that we usually use as benchmarks to compare ourselves with. And that would include Ash County, of course, Blading County, Yadkin County, same population size. The valuations are approximately the same. And then the adjoining counties, which have significantly larger population sizes, significantly larger valuations. Our compensation schedule for this fiscal year, according to what was turned into the state, was ninety-six-hundred dollars plus twenty-four-hundred travel for the commissioners. We do not differentiate, unlike other counties, we don't differentiate between the chair or the commissioner. If you start comparing us with some of the other counties that surround us, of course, we are certainly compensated less than Catawba County. But of course, Catawba County has approximately five times to six times the population size we do, same with Iredham. If you start comparing us with Wilkes County, you have to go to the previous tour with Caldwell County, which are counties that we do have a sort of a contemporary relationship with based upon the way we run our county government. Their compensation schedule is certainly less than ours. The reason why I bring this up is that there has been some complaints from some of the citizens that perhaps this sudden increase in the compensation, because there was a tremendous increase between two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. If you go back to two thousand eleven, where the compensation schedule for this board was at eighty-one-hundred-eighty-six, and look at it to the present day, that was a seventeen percent increase in the compensation. The county valuation only increased eleven percent. That's considered quite a leap. As a matter of fact, it was a fourteen-point-five percent increase between two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen. The methodology, and, Mr. French, I'll ask, how is the commissioner pay dictated every budgetary year? Is there a certain formula? Is there, or is it just a determination that's made by the finance committee?
It's a determination by both the finance committee and the full board.
Okay, and the full board will vote for whatever the finance committee presents?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's included into the overall county budget?
That's correct.
All right. My proposal with this resolution is to tie the compensation to the county. There is, the county gets evaluated. We have property tax evaluation every year. I just got the numbers from Mr. Curley for last year for two thousand thirteen, because he doesn't have the complete numbers in for two thousand fourteen in yet. But for two thousand thirteen, the valuation for the county is two billion, six-hundred-and-fourteen million dollars. And that's round dollars. By using the multiplication table that I included in this resolution, if you take that valuation, the valuation would be at eighty-four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, which is in line with where we were before, and it's in line with some of our neighbors. As the county increases, so would the compensation. If the county would decrease in its tax evaluation, then our compensation would decrease as well. And I'd love to entertain any comments. This is not an indictment. This is not saying that you guys did anything wrong. I just think that this was inopportune. This was not what the county needed at the time. And I have been pushing fiscal responsibility. And whether or not I stay on this board after this year, that's up to the voters. But I came from a military background. And when I went to NCO Academy and was a non-commissioned officer, one of the things that I learned was that you always take care of your people first. I find it difficult to reconcile that we've had that big of an increase in compensation for us and have not had it for the county employees.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't necessarily think this is a good idea or a bad idea. You haven't approached me, I don't know about any of the other commissioners, but to explain more fully about this, I didn't know it until I actually picked up the packet. So, you know, I'd like to have some time to study it. But I'm certainly not going to vote for this one day before an election. Absolutely not going to happen.
And I agree with you, Ryan. The reason why this was, actually, this was submitted far earlier to get approval through the channels and legal. And the reason why it's got pushed to here is because we have been busy. We've been busy. And it just ended up here. And if we want to table it and pick it up, that's fine.
Just a few more comments. I actually went through this weekend and went through every county in North Carolina that I had the information for, which was, I think, ninety-eight counties. I went through every single county. Then I broke it down as far as, I believe, counties from twenty thousand to fifty thousand in population. Our compensation is right in line, right down the average. Actually, maybe a little bit less because some of these counties don't report meeting payments. But I just can't, you know, I don't think this is a good idea or a bad idea. I just don't have enough information right now. But there's pros and cons to this as well.
The county salary information is available from the University of North Carolina School of Government?
Yes.
And they, looking at the chart right here on the latest edition of two thousand thirteen. And looking at the compensation schedule, some of the other counties, you could almost make a full-time job. It is the equivalent of a full-time job compared to the average salary in Alexander County. And then some of the other counties, of course, the more rural counties, the coastal counties, which have very low valuations, very low populations, yes, the compensation schedule is lower. But their valuation is lower, their population size is lower as well. But I, Ryan, I am, this is not gotcha politics. I'm not making an indictment. If this is something that we want to discuss later, that's fine. If it's something that we want to discuss now, that's fine as well.
I'm prepared to vote on it now.
Anybody else have any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
Well, I have, I'm like Ryan, I don't have enough information about this. And I would prefer that if there's going to be anything done, that we wait until after tonight.
Well, I would make, I would like to make a couple more comments. We do have, like I said, an election tomorrow. And we have a large field of, I would say, a lot of qualified people. And if you want qualified businessmen and women to run for this position, I was like you. When I ran for this, I didn't know there was a salary attached to it. I thought it was, you know,
Honorific.
It was non-compensated.
Right, it was honorific.
But being in this position for five years, it deserves compensation. You spend a lot of time away from your job, away from your business, where you could be making more money than the time you're spending out talking with people or in meetings or looking through reports. So I would say that before this election, a lot of people have comments and they don't exactly have all their information. So if you want qualified people to run, then you have to compensate them for their time away where they lose that salary and income. One other thing that we did, county commissioners no longer receive an increase in salary with cost of living adjustments with the other employees. And I think that's a way to do, I think they should not get automatic increases. We should not. The county commissioners after us should not get automatic increases. They should have to vote on it in the budget. And we no longer receive any reimbursements for any expenses unless it's an overnight trip. You know, we spend a lot of time driving, a tremendous amount of time driving, meeting with people, lunches, that sort of thing. You know, I'm meeting with people breakfast and lunch several times a week. And we no longer receive any reimbursement for that. So that was part of the reason for those, for that increase. But I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing. It actually may be a good thing. But I'd like to have some more information about it. We haven't had the time to talk about it. I haven't had a conversation with you about it, you know? So we have to discuss the good and the bad.
Well, it's out there, so.
Motion's on the floor. If I do not hear a motion to table it to another session, then I'll call for the vote.
I make a motion that we table it until a later date.
I make a motion, we vote on it.
She made a motion. She doesn't really have to have a second. Neither does Commissioner Jennings. Somebody had to help me out here a little bit with the work rules of law, because I'll tell you, I just about got me on this one. I'll tell you, I think what would happen is that we would have to make, since Judy made hers last and hers was motion to.
Table it.
Table it.
Right.
You vote on that first.
I have to vote it first, then I vote Burke's, and then I come back to.
Right.
Then we don't have to, if everybody agrees to table it, then I don't have to vote on his because it's been tabled. Another meeting. I just want to make sure I'm right. Okay. The motion's been made to table this to another time by Commissioner Moose. All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Okay, there's one. All those opposed? All right, it's okay. All right. Commissioner Jennings, so that fails, four to one. Commissioner Jennings made a motion to call for the vote. All those in favor indicate, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand.
To call for the vote?
That's what he was saying. Then go ahead and do it now. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So that's the same as calling for the vote?
Right.
All those in favor indicate raising your hand. So that's three. All those opposed?
You're going to vote again?
You didn't vote for your motion?
No, I was, say the motion again. I made the motion, vote for it now. No, I don't withdraw it. I vote in favor of not, the motion is not to increase or not to change the pay for commissioners.
That's not your motion. You made a motion to call for the vote.
Well, okay, I'll change my motion.
Okay, you've got to vote on what?
I withdraw my motion and make another one.
Okay, if you withdraw your motion, oh, man, y'all got me. If you withdraw the motion, do we have to call for a vote? No.
Not if he withdraws it.
He withdraws it. He withdraws it.
Now you can do it.
Now we vote on the motion to call for the vote. Is that correct, what you want to do?
Yes, I want to call for a vote whether or not we approve, and my motion is to leave the compensation as it is. That's my motion.
Okay. All right. So now, it's my understanding, let's get this straight, that you're just calling for the vote, but if we vote on his recommendation, if we voted up or down, it's going to do the same thing?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay?
Yes.
So then basically what you're saying is you're making a motion to call for the vote, is that what I understand?
That's correct.
A call for a vote?
Call for a vote on the motion.
On the motion, on Andrew's motion.
It's no longer tabled.
No longer tabled.
No longer tabled.
We don't have to vote on Burkey's motion. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Totally confused.
Okay. I will vote on Burkey's motion to make sure we do it the way, the way I think of it. All those in favor of Burkey's motion indicate raising your right hand.
Which was?
Was to call for the vote.
Was to call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Okay, all right, so we got that. All right, that carries. All right.
Now they're going to vote on it.
I'm more confused than ever.
You may be, but the basic thing that it all comes down to is whether we vote for or against the resolution that has been presented by Commissioner Ferguson. That's what it all comes down to now. That's where we're at. And I hope that I did everything right, because I tried to.
I think you did.
Okay? So now, the motion is to approve the resolution, and this is Mr. Commissioner Ferguson's motion. The motion is to, to approve the resolution tying Alexander County Commissioners' compensation to county valuation. That is the motion. And the resolution has been read. Is there any, there's been a motion, there's been a second, is there any further discussion?
I'll just say one thing. I'm, like I said, I'm not for or against this, but I'm not voting for it the day before an election, so.
Does that mean you're not voting?
I'm, no, I'm going to vote against it because we're in the day before an election.
You're going to ask for a vote.
I call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution indicate raising your right hand. There's one vote for. All those against the resolution indicate raising your right hand. All right? Four to one. Okay, motion is defeated, four to one. Okay, I hope I got that right.
I think you did.
I hope, I try. All right. Number six, ammo order for Alexander County Sheriff's Department, Mr. Rich French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your pocket is an email from Chad Pennell with the captain with the Alexander County Sheriff's Office. Ammo is now taking twelve to eighteen months to be delivered, and so therefore Sheriff's Department is requesting that we go ahead and authorize ordering ammo for, for next fiscal year from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget year in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and we'd recommend that.
Okay.
Is that for a single year?
Yes, sir.
I think the whole bottom line was that the, is the reason they're wanting to do this is just because it's taking so long.
Right.
And they want to get that order in.
Right.
I move to approve, go ahead and ordering the ammunition for the Sheriff's Department and approve that amount, approve that in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's made, the motion's second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a comment, it's a general comment, whether it's true, whether it's not true. A lot of you have probably read that the Department of Homeland Security has been purchasing billions of rounds of ammunition. And I understand that that contributes to the dearth or the shortage of ammunition nationwide. If you were a gun owner, whether it's a twenty-two long rifle, whether it's a twenty-gauge shotgun, whether it's a thirty-eight special, it's hard to find ammunition. I'm in total favor of, when it comes to the vote, in total favor of, of this, but I think it's a shame for our Sheriff's Department and any Sheriff's Department, any law enforcement agency in this country that protects the citizens of this country, to have to wait twelve to eighteen months to get ammunition. You don't know what's going to arise, how much ammunition you're going to use, and to wait, have to wait twelve to eighteen months because of something the federal government's doing, I suspect. I don't know for a fact because I haven't got the facts because I'm not, I don't have a top secret clearance from the Homeland Security Department. But everything I've read, that's the gist of, in the genesis of the problem, but I just wanted to make those comments because I, again, think it's a shame that the Sheriff's Department has to wait twelve to eighteen months to get ammunition.
Any other discussion?
I, I do want to point out the, the numbers here. This would, since we don't have numbers attached to this, this dollar amount, I'm, I'm assuming we're talking about roughly thirty-six thousand rounds of ammunition. Not sure what the number of rounds are.
But, but that is, this is a consistent number. I've seen this to the budget lines before. So they're forecasting that this is going to be the same thing that it spent last year and the year before. So this is not anything new.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion case, thank you. Sales tax update, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we have a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Update video.
Yeah.
Just a short video to play at this time. Chad, can you play the video?
Hello, I'm Ray Jefferies, the president of your Association of County Commissioners and a person county commissioner. I hope you will join me at our two thousand fourteen County Assembly Day, which will be held May twenty-eighth. County Assembly Day is your chance to lobby your state legislators on issues of importance to counties. To show you how important it is for you to be involved in our advocacy efforts, your board of directors agreed to waive the early registration fee for county commissioners this year. That means it won't cost your county anything for you to attend. We have an exciting agenda. Senate President Pro Tem Phil Berger and Speaker of the House Tom Tillis have again been invited to speak, and we have a panel of political experts to discuss the current mood of the General Assembly. County Assembly Day is your chance to hear from state legislative leaders and to lobby your delegates here in Raleigh. Please don't miss this opportunity to help the association achieve your goals. I look forward to seeing you in Raleigh on May twenty-eighth.
The Association of County Commissioners membership established goals for the current two-year legislative cycle, and we accomplished many of these goals last year. The second year of the legislative session offers a shorter timeframe for us to work on the remainder of your agenda, so we ask members to prioritize outstanding goals to narrow our focus. You told us to concentrate on one goal, reinstate lottery funds for school construction. Counties use part of the proceeds from the North Carolina Education Lottery to build new schools to ease overcrowding and to repair and renovate older schools to better serve students and teachers. Since the lottery's inception, it has contributed nine hundred and seventy-two million dollars towards these purposes. Unfortunately, economic conditions and growing education needs have caused a diversion of funds intended for school capital needs to other educational uses. For the past several years, counties have received a little over half of that amount that the original law determined for school construction. In the meantime, the backlog of construction and renovation needs has grown. Counties have also had to shift money from elsewhere in their budgets to make debt payments they had planned to cover with lottery proceeds. With your help, your advocates will work to reinstate the original language in state law, requiring forty percent of lottery proceeds to be used for school construction and to achieve a partial increase in the actual dollar amount for that purpose, with the funds gradually increasing over several years to the full forty percent. We have heard from legislators that they are receiving this message from their commissioners. Thank you for your efforts up to this point. Achieving this goal will be challenging. The state has many competing needs, and revenue for the coming fiscal year likely will not be as healthy as anticipated. Please continue to explain to your legislators the value of the lottery funds to the residents of your county.
In addition to advocating on behalf of counties, your association also monitors legal cases with potential statewide impacts to county government. Two such matters from our risk management pool were recently argued before the North Carolina Supreme Court. In both cases, NCACC filed amicus or friend of the court briefs to inform the Supreme Court of specific impacts these cases could have on county government operations. One case involved a county's ability to utilize governmental immunity, while another case involved workers' compensation for a temporary employee. Both cases were appealed because the Court of Appeals decided in favor of the plaintiffs who were suing the county. The NCACC will continue to monitor these and other cases and will inform counties about the outcomes and potential impacts on counties as these matters are decided. Please keep NCACC informed of legal issues in your county that may have effect on other counties. As always, we truly appreciate your feedback and support.
Keynote speaker Neil Peterson will bring to life his round-the-world journey as a solo yacht racer during Friday's opening general session, building real-world lessons from his experiences. Plenary speaker Dr. Vincent Cavello, a leading expert in the field of crisis communication, will address building, repairing, and maintaining public trust in government during Saturday's second general session. The association is also continuing its youth leadership development initiative with the Fifth Annual Youth Summit, which will bring together youth delegates ages fourteen through nineteen on Friday and Saturday of the conference. Please recognize your county's youth delegate at a Board of Commissioners meeting prior to the annual conference. Registration will be available online in early May. We hope to see representatives from all one hundred counties this August.
I will say on August the fourteenth through the seventeenth, at the conference in, it's Bunkin County, I believe it is, Randy Beal, who's the commissioner from, Ronnie Beal, I say Randy, Ronnie Beal, the commissioner from Macon County, will be named as the new president of the association. He's a small rural town commissioner. He's a commissioner that pushes hard for the rural, rural counties, and I'm looking forward to him being our president because I really think that he will take the initiative to push hard for what the rural counties are needing. And that's going to be exciting for rural, rural counties.
I'll say Commissioner Beal is a, we have a great relationship with him. He, I hope Alexander County benefits from his tenure there as president, so he's a great guy.
I, I would offer this also, having met him and been introduced to him by Chairman Yoder and County Manager Rick French, he's a character also. That's kind of a mild word, but he is smart, and he knows local government in North Carolina. And I don't think there could be a better choice because he does come from a small county. Small counties, small rural counties in North Carolina are underserved and underrepresented in the state legislature. We don't have the voice that larger counties like Mecklenburg, Guilford, Forsyth, and counties like that have. So I will tell you, Ronnie is not a wallflower. So as, as the chairman said, we are now going to have a loud voice in favor of the issues that affect small counties. There couldn't be a better choice, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree. Sales tax update, Mr. French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got the, the figures up so you can look at the data at this time. Currently, for eight months, we've collected two million, three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. That's a little bit behind where we were this time last year. Last year, if you'll notice, two million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, so not, not far, thirteen thousand dollars behind that number, which is still, we're still running very flat, our sales tax dollars are still very flat. Also, with our hold harmless, it's running a hundred and three thousand dollars, so that pushes us further behind where we, where our goal is to increase the percentage of sales taxes. But this gives you a good idea, but again, this is an eighth month report. Sales tax numbers run three months, run a couple months behind, so that's our report. And from now on, we'll do it in an overhead form so you can take a look at it, and the public can also see it. So if you'll notice, the Article thirty-nine, Article forty, forty-two, Article forty-four, and Article forty-six add up to the columns on the right-hand side, which give us the total sales tax dollars. This past month, we collected two hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars, which is a little behind, but not much far behind where we need to be. So that's the update. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but this is a very flat sales tax picture for Alexander County.
Thank you, Mr. French. Anybody have any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it goes back to some of the comments I was alluding to with Ronnie Beal acceding to the chairmanship of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which I hope you can help us with. One of the things that we're suffering from in Alexander County and other small counties is the way sales tax revenue is dispensed throughout the state, throughout the state when the changes were made. And I would defer to the chairman to tell me what date, what year was that, that sales tax?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight or nine, somewhere along in there, at least two thousand eight.
It used to be on a prorated basis, based on the population of your county. And the information I read, now my figures may be a little bit rough, and I would ask the county manager to keep me straight, but Alexander County, now it's on a per capita basis, I mean, excuse me, it's on a point-of-sale basis. So for example, if you buy anything in Catawba County, that sales tax revenue goes to Catawba County. If you buy anything in Ardell County, it goes to Ardell County. It doesn't stay here in Alexander County. Alexander County doesn't have a shopping center, the largest retail outlet we have, I guess you could say two of them now, Tractor Supply and Walmart. So hopefully Ronnie can marshal all the smaller counties together and get enough votes to change that appropriations methodology back to the way it used to be, because what I was going to ask the county manager, reinforce the information that I read that Alexander County lost almost three million dollars of sales tax revenue when that, isn't that not correct, Mr. French?
Yes, sir. But predicting what the discussion has been is that that's something that even though a number of counties are interested in it changing, it's not going to change.
It's not, I know it's not going to happen, but I just wanted to comment about what we have lost since that sales tax methodology has changed. And if you look at the, at the, at the sales tax revenue figures, you'd see where we would be year-to-date now compared to where we are.
We also lost Medicaid, that Medicaid expense too, so.
I'll add one thing, Commissioner Jennings was saying, you know, it, it makes sense that if you spend the point-of-sale, if you spend money in that county, then it should stay in that county. But take Hickory for example, it's a, it's a retail shopping hub for all the surrounding counties. All those other counties use their roads, you know, their, their infrastructure to get to Hickory, to spend that money. So part of that sales tax, not all, not all the sales tax, most people don't know that sales tax is broken up into all these different little one cent, half cent, quarter cent sales taxes. So part of that sales tax was on a per capita basis, and it went into a big pot, and it was distributed out from there to all one hundred counties in the state. And when that changed, it really impacted negatively the Alexander County budget. So when that occurred, we've, we've really seen flat and decreasing sales tax revenues. But, you know, i- if you only had a portion of that to come back on a per capita basis as a hub, you know, you deserve, Hickory would deserve, you know, a little bigger piece of the pie, or Catawba County would deserve a little bigger piece of the pie. But when it's your citizens that are earning their money and taking it to other places and spending it, you know, that's why we feel like some of it should come back on a per capita basis.
We certainly do feel like that.
One additional comment, and I'm very serious about this. And I know folks at home probably cannot see Bud Kaywood and his wife Judy in the audience, who are very active in the assistance for the future of Alexander County. They were instrumental in developing the buy-local campaign in Alexander County. We, the citizens of Alexander County, need to be very, very, very serious about buying local for this very reason. So I just want to thank them for being behind that, but also encourage the citizens of Alexander County to buy local. You see the red signs around and window, windows of shops? It's, it's just not something that's not serious. It's very. It's very serious, because we are behind in sales tax year-to-date, sales tax revenue. We need every penny that we can get.
Okay. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, item number nine, board appointment and reappointments. Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, reappoint to the Planning and Zoning Commission Bud Kaywood for two years. Appoint to the Voluntary Farmland Preservation Board Tracy Fox, replacing Kathy Chatham for four years. Um, and we also need a commissioner to serve on the Western Piedmont Council Government MPO, RPO, Transportation Advisory Board, and replacement for Margot Elder on the Library Board of Trustees. But tonight, we're just talking about those two appointments, and there's one other that you're going to mention tonight.
Absolutely. Uh, entertain them. I'm going to mention the other one. We'll take them separate, if you don't mind. Uh, I have a motion to approve the appointments for planning and zoning in voluntary farmland.
It's moved to approve?
Motion's made, second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Also, there's one other appointment that we need to make. We need to appoint a trustee to the CBCC, uh, CBCC main branch of, uh, the Community College?
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees. And, uh, at this time, uh, I would ask if we have any nominees for that.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to appoint Hazel Yoder to that position.
Are there any other nominees? If not, uh, ladies and gentlemen, since my wife has been appointed, I'm going to ask the vice chairman if he would to call for the vote, and I'm going to withdraw from this vote.
Uh, and I will say before, uh, calling for the vote, Commissioner Yoder's wife is very involved in the community, so, uh, this is not something out of line. Uh, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand?
I think we need a second to the nomination. Do we not?
Oh, there's not a second. I'll second the motion.
Motion's made, second. The vice chairman will take this.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All those opposed? You're not voting? Okay.
No, sir.
All right. Uh, motion carries forward and, uh, nothing.
I, I don't feel like that it's appropriate for me to be, not when a relative of mine is involved. I, I withdraw.
Okay. Item number 10, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 33 and number 34, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Two budget amendments tonight. One is to budget for prior year health reimbursement arrangement, HRA expense claims paid out of fiscal year 2014, and to budget for the difference between fiscal year 2014 self-insurance, medical insurance claims paid and premiums charged to county departments as estimated by the county's insurance consultant. The insurance claims paid in excess of the premiums charged to departments are accounted in the expense light item, self-insurance medical claims expense. And number 34 is to budget for child passenger safety diversion grant program, purchase of printed materials to distribute to ticketed motorists to make them aware of the process to comply with the child passenger safety law. Grant funding is through the Governor's Highway Safety Program, and to increase the medical examiner budget for estimated expenses through, uh, June 30th, 2014, and to increase the extension service budget for donations from outside sponsors received during the 2012-2013 budget year, and to increase the recreation budget for anticipated sponsor revenue from Academy Sports in exchange for displaying banners provided by Academy, Academy Sports at the county's recreation sports fields.
Entertain a motion at this time to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve Budget Ordinance Amendments 33 and 34.
Do we have a second? Motion second by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I've got a question about the Academy of Sports, um, banners. Uh, what, I mean, is that appropriate?
It is. We've, um, they've approached us, and that, those funds from them, it's just a couple thousand dollars, will be distributed between all the recreation departments in the county, all the community recreation departments.
And if, may I ask a question or make a comment? Mr. Chairman, if, uh, Mr. French, also, is I understand, the archery tournament that was held this weekend, did they not help sponsor that event on Saturday?
I don't know.
I understand that they did.
I, I don't know. I, I don't have an answer for that. Now, the motion's been made in second. Is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Other business, County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple just, uh, dates to bring to your attention. One is the commissioners have been invited, uh, to, uh, on May the 8th, from 12 to 1, to, for the report, what's called the Report to the People, which is the Extension Service, uh, annual, uh, meeting. They provide lunch. It's a good opportunity to share and learn about the programs that Ag Extension offer in Extension and 4H and youth development, and through the Extension Service and agriculture in our county. Uh, on May the 12th, I'd like to recommend that we have our first, um, budget work session on the 2014-2015 budget. That'll be next Monday here at CBCC at 6:00. And also on May 19th, uh, we have our commissioners meeting scheduled here. We'll have our public hearing on our budget on the 2014-2015 budget.
The work session on the 12th, is that at 6:00 here in this room?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And that will be, uh, a total work session, and it will consist of nothing except discussion of the budget.
That's correct.
And we will go over the budget at that time and, and discuss things, any questions or comments that anyone would like to make, and discuss the budget. That will be the proper time to do it at that time. And of course, the following Monday night, uh, we will have the public hearing, where the people, the citizens of the county will have the opportunity to come, and, or anybody that wants to can come and say what they'd like to say about the budget pro or con. And then on June the 12th, isn't it?
Second.
June the 2nd. Of course, now, we will approve the budget at that time. So, uh, do you want, sir?
Second is our first meeting in June.
First meeting in, in June, and we will have our budget approved. So, uh...
Is, is there a reason for, uh, moving forward at the first of the month on the budget, as opposed to the middle to the end of the month?
Because we've started, we've actually tried to start a month earlier to give you more time to review the information, so that's what we're doing. Normally, we present the budget to you at the end of May, and we're giving you the, the information three or four weeks early.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'd like, you know, to take as much time as we need to, uh, to, to discuss the budget. Uh, I, I, I think we should move the budget approval from June 2nd to middle to the end of June.
We have another meeting on the 23rd, but... We have another meeting on, we do have another meeting on June 23rd, but we may not have all of our commissioners at that meeting.
Okay, that's something we can discuss.
That's correct. All you really need to do is have the public hearing. That's the only thing you're required to do until you adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
Right. But we most of them, you know, get, get it in there that the, uh, we will be discussing the, in the work session next Monday night here at 6:00. Okay? Is there any other discussion as far as the county managers' report? The consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve?
Second. I make a motion to approve, excuse me.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Mr. French, if I'm not mistaken, there's no need to have a closed session. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So this will conclude the meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners.